Means they're coming on live right away. They're not in. Now you try. Oh, she. So the person just gets to talk.
So I have to be on. Okay. All right. So I am about to call the Malden City Council for the 2024 session to order. I just have a little bit of note. I actually have my own little gavel I got as a high school student when I did the speech and debate for high school. So I think in honor of our youth, it took me only 45 years to get to this kind of position. Other people have gotten there quicker. But I thought I would dust off the gavel in my name and say, all right, Malden City Council is now called to order. Good. All right. Great. So let me see. Okay. So, all right. Okay. That's sorry. Okay. Hey, all right. So we're all called to order. All rise and salute the flag. And we do the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of veterans, servicemen, and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. All right. Okay. All right. We go on to the roll call. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Seega. Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor. Counsel President Winslow.
Here. Okay. Great. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. And just to be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. Do we have anybody else doing audio and video recordings tonight? Okay. All right. So that's, we just know UMA and that. So first order of business is public comments. Do we have any? We don't believe we have anybody sign up for public comment. All right. No one to sign up for public comments. So we go on to their next order of business. We have our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes from December 9th and January 2nd, six petitions being referred to license, one paper being referred to ordinance, and five papers being referred to finance. Does any council have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? So I actually have read the minutes. I did have one comment, so I guess I would defer. And well, item 2-24, we, I did have Carolyn and I talked about this. So we'll take that off the consent agenda for the moment. And then otherwise, I will entertain a motion to, except for that, so motion by Counselor Seega, second by Counselor Condon, we'll move ahead and pass the consent agenda with the exception of item 224. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So just on item 224, I a little bit defer to Counselor Crowe, sorry I didn't mention this, but those, that paper covers 23, 459, and 460. And those were the report from the committee, and there was a couple of committee items that had not been referred out on the meeting of the 29th. And Carolyn and I had suggested to add some language noting that those papers were not referred out of committee. So I would, if you were to be offered a motion to that. All right. Any second on that? Second by Counselor Linehan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, so otherwise, will someone make a motion to adopt the minutes of the 29th? Or the 19th, December 19th? Yeah. Counselor McDonald moves to accept the minutes of December 29th. Second? Second by Counselor Condon. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is passed. Now we go on to appointments and elections. I believe we have passed out, everybody should have the appointments. And I've talked to most everybody here about those, so let me just go through those. All right. So let's see. So paper. So this is Counsel, Counsel President Winslow will announce the appointments. Yes, sure. Okay. Okay, sure.
I can take care of that for you.
Okay, sure. Okay. You read the paper. I'm sorry. I'm getting used to things here. So clerk, will the clerk please read the paper? Save me a little.
Paper 16-24, Counsel President Winslow will announce the appointments of 2024 council committees.
I will go proceed with the announcement. Thank you, Carolyn, for being correct. So, right. So, dear council colleagues, thanks once again for nominating me and supporting me for council president in 2024. My key goals in establishing committee assignments are to ensure we can work together to do the vital work. Residents have entrusted all of us being their elected representatives, and to that end, to help each of you do the work you think can best serve our residents. So here's an overall view of the organizational structure for the council in 2024. Presiding officers. At our meeting on January 2nd, 2024, the council elect me to serve as council president in 2024. Pursuant to Rule 10.02 as amended in December of 2023, I hereby appoint Ward for Counselor Ryan O'Malley to serve as the council's first president pro tempore in instance of my temporary absence. So congratulations, Ryan. So great. All right. Standing committees. The standing committees will remain as set forth in Rule 46.0. Some standing committees meet frequently and others meet infrequently. Rather than proposing a rule change to modify jurisdictions or consolidation of committees at this juncture, I've had, I've decided to use my appointment authority and to plan to work with the council when referring papers to committees to streamline committee rules as follows. Unified Committee on Public Holdings. I'm pointing the same three councils to the Cemetery Committee, Public Property Committee, and Public Works Committee. And since those three committees meet infrequently, the ultimate objective will be to consolidate these three committees into a public holdings committee. I foresee assigning this unified committee the role of working on the city's capital plan, as working with these department under its jurisdiction, under jurisdiction on action to implement the goals of the city's upcoming climate action plan related to public holdings. License Committee. This committee has jurisdictions over licenses required by ordinance. I plan to work with the committee chair and the council to also assign other types of licenses that are sought from the council to this committee, such as the 5G cell tower license application. So, and I don't think there'll be many of those coming forward. We really did the big, big amount of those a couple of years ago. Personnel Appointments and Public Safety Committees. I plan to work with the committee chairs and council to see these committees, and select a few departments each year to discuss one of each, discuss those departments' mission, priorities, successes, and challenge to have an accountability role. Finance. The council several years ago created an ad hoc committee on long-term financial planning and strategic committee. After speaking with Counselor Spatafora, who chaired that committee, I'm planning to work with the finance committee to lead that effort. Special Committees. These are under Rule 47. Sometimes we refer these ad hoc committees as well. These committees are ones we establish to have special missions described in resolutions or by the council president. The special committees for 2024 will be as follows. The Future of Maplewood Square Committee and the Waterfront Access Committees will continue their work into the 24, 25 term. The Committee on Technology Policy. I've spoken with Counselor Linehan regarding this committee's work. The committee developed recommendations that are integrated into the new council rules. So Counselor Linehan and I agreed that this committee can be discontinued. The Charter Review Committee. The work of Charter Review Committee will continue into 24, 25 term. I plan to lead the Charter Review and Personnel and Appointments Committee with the mutual intent to work with the mayor to create a more adaptable and robust framework of governments to better face the current challenges of housing affordability, growing our commercial tax base, and adapting to climate change as the council works with the mayor and the community to implement our affordable housing plan, adopt a climate action plan, and update our master plan. So that's something that I do want to, we get, we did back in May come up with some version of the charter. We still have not kind of crossed the finish line on that, and so I do want to make sure we do that. So the work of the committee on the long-term financial planning and strategy will be taken on by the finance committee, so that committee will be discontinued. The Resiliency and Sustainability Committee. The city's Climate Action Planning Committee will be presenting the city's first climate action plan. I have worked with Counselor McDonald to ensure that committee continued, that committee's work continues under that plan, so this committee will be discontinued. Community Engagement and Collusion Committee. As many remember, under Counselor Jimmy Maria, we had a Citizens Engagement Committee. Counsel Cologne Hayes has asked that this committee be revived and has offered to be its leader. A resolution to establish this committee will be introduced next week for the council's consideration. And basically, that would be, as proposed, Community Engagement Inclusion Committee will seek to broaden community input in key decisions referred by the city council through forums, surveys, and other actions, review language access and diversity equity inclusions initiatives in the city, and encourage youth to be engaged in civil life. So that's kind of the outline of where we're going with committees. And so then, in your paper, in papers, I have the detail of all the committees. Should I read those in, or just, I can refer to, just briefly, I'm going to just mention the chairs. Read them into the record, okay. So I'll read them into the record. So, or do you want to? I'll do that, so, yeah. So Standing Committing Assignments. So Finance Committee. Counsel McDonald will be chair. Counsel Condon has agreed to be vice chair. And then the additional four members are Counsel Cologne Hayes, Spatafora, Taylor, and I'm appointing myself to that committee since it has six members. License Committee, Counsel Seika will continue to be chair of that committee. Vice Chair will be Counsel Cologne Hayes. Members will be Counsel Condon, Simonelli, and Taylor. The Cemetery Committee, Public Property Committee, Public Works Committee, which referring to as the Public Holdings Committee, will be chaired by Counsel McDonald, vice chair Counsel O'Malley, and a member Counsel Spatafora. Personnel and Appointments Committee. I will chair that committee with Counsel Cologne Hayes being vice chair. And additional members will be Counsel Crowe, Counsel Linehan, and Counsel Spatafora. Public Safety Committee will be headed by, and chaired by Counsel Crowe, vice chair Counsel McDonald, and Counsel Simonelli will be a member. Rules and Ordinance Committee will be chaired by Counsel Linehan, vice chair Counsel Crowe, and additional members, O'Malley, Seika, and Simonelli. Special Committees. Future of Maplewood Square Committee, I will continue as chair of that committee. Counsel Cologne Hayes will be vice chair. Welcome Counsel Taylor as Ward 5 counselor and representative on that committee. And the resident members will be continuing on will be Shane Lundrum of Ward 5, Naomi Kaim of Ward 6, Bonita McAllister of Ward 6, and the business representative will be Gabriel Tabario. The Waterfront Access Committee will be chaired by Counsel Crowe and also have Counsel Cologne Hayes and Counsel O'Malley on there. And Neil Anderson, our harbor master, will be a continuing ex officio member of that. Charter Review. I will chair that committee. Counsel Linehan will be vice chair, and Counsel Spatafora will be a member, having continuity there. Our clerk, Ms. DeSiderio, will be ex officio, as will Ron Hogan from the mayor's, the Strategic Initiative Office, so. Community Engagement Inclusion Committee, when formed, Counsel Cologne Hayes will chair that. Counsel Taylor will be vice chair, and Counsel Simonelli will be on that. Ad hoc and ex officio appointments. The Affordable Housing Trust, Counsel Linehan will be the council's appointment to that trust. Complete Streets Committee. Counsel Taylor and myself will serve in the advisory committee on that capacity. Counsel McDonald will continue on energy efficiency. I will be the council's representative to the library trustees. Counsel Cologne Hayes will be the representative to the Malden River Works project. Master Plan Steering, as that's formed, Counsel Crowe is the first appointee from the council. Counsel O'Malley and Counsel Spatafora will join her, working with the mayor's office on that one. Open Space and Recreation. We will be doing an update to that, and the mayor's requested appointees to that. So Counsel Taylor and Counsel Simonelli will be appointed to that. Problem Properties. Counsel Crowe will be our representative there. Racial Equity, Counsel McDonald will serve on that committee. Site Design, Counsel Spatafora will continue in that role. And Counsel Taylor will take on the land-standing role of Counsel Murphy on that one. So Site Plan Review for Downtown, RIO and MBTA, Counsel Linehan and Counsel O'Malley. Site Plan Review for the Malden River, Counsel Crowe will chair that with Counsel Cologne Hayes and Counsel O'Malley. Site Plan Review for Rose Quarry, Counsel Seika and Spatafora will continue their role on that. So that's the committees for 2024. And looking forward to working with everybody to get our business rolling on that. So I think we're on to the next matter, next business. Do we have to, okay, so, all right. So what do we got to do on this?
Move to place on file?
Okay, oh, great. On Counsel O'Malley's motion to place the committee appointments on file, seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that paper is here placed on order. Next order of business?
Paper 17-24, Order That the Outstanding Council Items Be Carried Forward From the 2022-2023 By Annual Session To the Current Session.
So, so everybody should have gotten the list of papers that need to transition. So can the clerk want to read those and the recommendations? And then we will discuss whether to proceed with those recommendations or amend those things.
We have four papers in the city council right now. Paper 102-23, Court Order Regarding Paper 60-22. Do you want me to read my recommendations along?
Yeah, yeah.
My recommendation is to place this paper on file. Paper 138-22, Youth Council Resolve, sponsor Cologne Hayes. Paper needs a vote to roll forward into the new term. Paper 286-22, Marijuana Establishment Ordinance Amendments. This paper expired. My recommendation is to place it on file. Paper 399-22, National Grid Petition. I believe that this paper needs to be redone altogether based on the national, so my recommendation is to place it on file. In Rules and Ordinance, we have Paper 118-22, Technology Policy. Paper should be withdrawn and placed on file because the information was rolled into the council rulebook. Paper 316-22, Zoning Amendment. Paper expired. My recommendation is place it on file. Paper 382-22, Double Polls. Paper needs to be rolled forward into the new term. Paper 197-23, Amendments To The Zoning Map Ordinance. October 15th, the paper expired, so it should be placed on file. Paper 236-23, Rose Quarry Amendment. Paper expired, should be placed on file. Paper 331-23, HR Job Descriptions For Elected Officials, sponsor McDonald. Paper needs a vote to roll forward into the new term. Paper 353-23, Retail Car Wash Hours Of Operation. This is still an active paper in ordinance. It needs a vote to roll forward. Paper 459-23, Livery Ordinance Amendments. Still active, paper needs a vote to roll forward. Paper 460-23, Christmas Tree Sales Ordinance. Paper needs a vote to roll forward into the new term. In Finance Committee, we have Paper 167-23, which is minutes to be approved. Paper needs a vote to roll forward. In the License Committee, we have petitions number 478-23 through 486-23. All active current petitions, they need a vote to roll forward into the new term. In the Personnel and Appointments Committee, Paper 33-23, Foyer Employee. This paper was taken out of committee by the council president at the time. Paper should be withdrawn and placed on file. In the Public Property Committee, 60-22. Paper should be placed on file. This has to do with the previous paper above, 102-22. Paper 141-23, A Tree At 77 Glen Rock Avenue. Paper needs a vote to roll forward into the new term. The Age Friendly Committee has Paper 183-22. This paper is old, and the committee is pretty much disbanded. So I think, are we rolling that forward? Or are we going to withdraw it? I think I'm changing my recommendation, given that, because we, okay. We're going to withdraw, we're going to place it on file. Parks and Recreation, Paper 351-22. Discussion On The Future Of Parks And Recreation In Malden. Paper needs a vote to roll forward into the new term. Future Of Maplewood Square, Meeting Minutes, Paper 263, Needs A Vote To Roll Forward Into The New Term. And that's it. Those are my recommendations on the open papers we have going on.
Well, any discussion? Okay, lights, okay, so we have. So Counsel Crowe is first?
I'm just, after Clerk DeSiderio's, you know, explanation, I make a motion that we place 102 of 22, the court order, on file. These papers on file. Paper 286 of 22, The Marijuana Establishments. Paper 399 of 22, The National Grid Petition. The one, Paper 118 of 22, The Technology Policy. Paper 316 of 22, The Zoning Amendments. Paper 197 of 23, More Zoning Amendments. That are all, all of these have been dealt with. Paper 236 of 23, The Rose Quarry Amendment. Paper 33 of 23, The Foyer Employee. And under Public Properties, Paper 622, that seems like a long one. 622, 37, 39, The Wild Street 5G Antenna. I make a motion to place all of those on file. And then the last one we just talked about was the Glen Rock Tree? Okay, you want to talk about that one?
Yeah, we were just going to move to withdraw. It was all outside committee with the tree warden.
So I think all of these, I mean, 141, you could talk about it. 23, all of those be placed on, withdrawn, be placed on file.
Let's see, next. Do, so we have Counsel Linehan, Counsel O'Malley. So let's see, okay, all right. So Counsel Linehan can now speak.
I think you turned me on.
Oh, let's see, oh, no, you're, okay. Let's see. Oh, Counsel, let's see, just trying to hear. All right, okay, it should be Counsel Linehan. All right, O'Malley's up, so, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm in agreement with Counsel Crowe's motion. I would just like to carry 197-23 forward. This is related to the zoning amendments. We're still waiting for a legal review. So if we could just move that one forward, I would be in line with the rest of your recommendation. Thank you. So I just request that that be taken up.
197-23?
Yeah.
The paper expired in October.
It can be sent back for a hearing. It can go back to the.
You want to send it back for another hearing?
We're still kind of outstanding for the legal review before we send it back. I think that's what we were doing.
All right. So we can send it back. So Counsel O'Malley, just to be clear on that, that 197-23, so rather than placing it on file, what would you like to do on that one?
I'd like to carry it forward.
Carry forward, so, all right. And then we can take whatever action is, right?
Wait for the legal review, and then if we want to decide to send it back for a hearing, we can do that. If not, we can always just.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, just. So I, should we say carry forward and then allow legal review? Is that, so, all right. I just, I don't know in the transition here how detail we should get.
It was already sent to legal review. It was just waiting for that.
Okay, all right, so it's already pending. So we're just carrying for it, all right, all right. Thanks for that clarification. Then I have, it's like Counsel McDonald, you're up now.
Yeah, just very quickly. So I would also like to add to the papers placed on file, 331-23, The Job Descriptions For Elected Officials. Where that landed in committee was that we, I'm going to submit a separate resolve that just has that job description, and the council can vote on it directly. So we can place this paper on file.
So now Counsel Linehan, I think you'll be up, so, yeah. Let me just, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to piggyback on what Counselor Crowe was saying and add, as she was saying, 141-23 to withdraw and place on file. That was a tree, an issue with a private tree that is in need of trimming by a utility. And we had referred to public property to try to compel the utility to trim it. And we've not been successful in getting them to do that. Actually, I was just speaking with the resident again today. It's dragging on a lot longer than we wanted to. But our tree warden has agreed to work with them to try to find either a lower-cost private service or try to find an alternate way to get this resolved for what's an elderly resident that needs help. So I think we can withdraw and place on file, 141 of 23. And then I had, I think, a point of information, a question on the technology policy. 118-22. So I went actually back and watched the meeting, which I know is like almost two years old. But I was confused because I know that we referred, we gave a committee report, the final technology committee meeting. Our output was this proposed policy that got sent for legal review. The, it's only captured in the committee report, though. We never actually filed it out of committee. And then I think the council rules are adapted from it, but are not actually what we developed in committee. So I think, I guess I'm looking at Carolyn here. If we have this expire or withdraw, do we lose the record of what the Technology Policy Committee developed? And I ask because I think the state law is potentially changing again next year. And we may want to be able to go back and see what we did and see if we need to make changes.
Well, the history of the paper stays forever, if that's what you're asking. You're not going to lose your document.
Even as a committee report, it's always going to be findable, basically. No, I found it in Grand Gis. I just wanted to make sure. I've never actually withdrawn a paper before. So I wanted to make sure that if we do that, we're not losing any of that work that that committee did since we're dissolving the committee as well.
No, you won't.
Okay, then I'm good, I'm good with that. That was my only question.
Okay. Counsel Spatafora?
I just got a point of information on Counsel Linehan's comment about the utility companies responsible for trimming the tree, and they won't do it?
We can't force them. I mean, it's like the 5G stuff. We can't force them to.
Yeah, let's see, okay. Okay, all right.
So it's a, the tree is on private property, and it's basically the, I think it's the electricity line is going through the tree. So the utility should trim that. But we've not been successful in getting them to do that. So I think the resident is just very frustrated So I think the resident is just very frustrated and wants it resolved. I have to say, this is something that's coming up more and more, particularly with older residents on fixed income. Getting trees trimmed is expensive, and if we aren't, if it's not a public tree, we just don't have a lot of options at our disposal. It's, I don't know what the answer is, but I think Chris Rosa is trying to work with me to try to work with the resident and find a way to just get it done.
Yeah, I don't want to certainly stifle the pull of the paper, but the same token is I think it's their responsibility, which I believe it is, I mean.
Yeah.
Your mic's not.
I'm sorry, yes.
Not on, yeah.
I'm too far, oh.
I'm just learning.
I would, I would just say, in a situation like this, like we've always done, I just wouldn't give, when they come in for a permit, this is when you have, this is the only time we get the utility companies to do something for us, is when they need a permit. And that frustrates me to know when. I talked to Council Windsor before, like the double tree list of the double pole, I continue to see it, and it's unfortunate that we have to threaten them with this action, but if it's really within their, it's in their responsibility, and it's, because it's a potential fire hazard, things like that, I would just say, next time they come in, we ask them to do it, and respectfully just say, until you do that, we're not giving you a permit.
So I have Councilor O'Malley next, then Councilor Linehan, if you want.
I was just gonna respond to that.
Okay, so, Councilor O'Malley.
Yeah, just in terms of strategy for this, we could, we could approach it that way, which I think would be, would be potentially resolve the matter. I also think that the city, and maybe this is what you're referring to, if the private property owner is willing, the city can accept a private, a tree on private property as a, as a public shade tree, and then the city would have the ability to do the trim. As long as it's within like, I think it's like twenty-five feet of a public right of way or something like that, that could be a great way to get another public shade tree under our jurisdiction. Thank you.
Councilor Spatafora?
No, I was shutting off my mic.
All right, all right. And then Councilor Linehan, you're up.
No, I was just gonna thank Councilor Spatafora for that. I think it makes sense. I actually, like incredibly frustratingly discovered that they were authorized to do trimming on the next street over last week. So like, how did we, how did we okay that and not say, like, please go fix this other one? So I don't know, maybe we should talk offline, but I'd love to know how we can be aware of when stuff like that's happening so that we can hook on something that we've been waiting for to something that they are, they need to come and do anyway, basically. That's more words about a tree than I thought I was gonna say tonight.
All right. So does anybody else have any changes to the recommendations of the city clerk on these?
Do I?
Okay.
Do some clarification?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Carol.
We have multiple motions on the floor. I want to make sure that I got everything. So by Councilor Crowe, she basically made a motion to take my recommendation on all papers needing to be placed on file. To do that, we have a motion from Councilor O'Malley to keep paper 197 and not to place it on file, roll forward. We have a motion by Councilor McDonald to amend my recommendation on paper 331 dash twenty-three and withdraw that paper.
And file.
Withdraw and place on file, yes. We have a motion for the same by Councilor Linehan on paper 141 dash twenty-three regarding the Glen Rock Tree. And those are the amendments to this document. Did I get everything correct?
What, 183 twenty-two, which is the age friendly, are we rolling that forward or placing on file?
I think we're gonna place that on file.
Okay.
If Councilor Crowe was okay with that.
That was okay.
And that's the one change, which I actually had in my notes.
So I.
And just to clarify, my intent was that it was a friendly amendment to Councilor Crowe's, so there would just be one vote.
Right, so why don't we, we'll just entertain a motion to amend the recommendations, the initial recommendations for that, her clarification? So Councilor Crowe makes that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor O'Malley? All right, so all those in favor of that motion? All right. So, and then, any further discussion as the paper is amended? Otherwise, someone can make a motion to, that we roll and withdraw papers as per the amended recommendation? All right, so moved by Councilor O'Malley to adopt the order based on the individual recommendations as amended, seconded by Councilor Crowe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the order is adopted. Communications from the mayor regarding the Community Preservation Act.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I have to bring that up. Give me one second. I apologize.
I have it right here, if you want. You want, you just want to read for the copy, so yeah, that's, that's, all right. So the clerk will read the mirrors.
Paper eighteen dash twenty-four, communication from Mayor Christensen regarding Community Preservation Committee submissions. Dear members of the city council, I write to ask for the city council's support to fund the following projects, which have been submitted to me and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. The Linden rink construction, sixty-seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars from open space reserve. The Oak Grove Community Center design, one hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred fifty thousand dollars from historic preservation reserve. Fitzgerald Park project, eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from open space reserve, and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from budgeted reserve. The Malden Hospital open space acquisition, seven hundred thirty thousand dollars from budgeted reserve, and the Malden River Works project, nine hundred eighty-three thousand dollars from budgeted reserve. In reaching their recommendation after public hearings, the CPC found that each of these projects meet eligibility requirements and align with the priorities stated in Malden's community preservation plan. Four of these recommendations comport with the community vision identified in our open space and recreation plan, which calls for a network of well-maintained open spaces that are available and accessible to all ages and interests. The proposals are in line with that goal and will include, among other things, the creation of an outdoor rink, the expansion of the widely used Fitzgerald Park to incorporate an enhanced play area with ADA accessibility, the acquisition and preservation of open space at the former Malden Hospital site, and funding toward the climate resilient public riverfront park as part of Malden River Works. In addition, the CPC also recommends funding that moves us closer to the goal of restoring and revitalizing the Oak Grove Community Center to its original longstanding use as a community center for meetings, events, and other civic uses. Again, I fully support these requests and believe that these projects will result in assets that will foster a sense of community that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Gary Christensen, mayor.
Great. So just to point out, our consent agenda, papers twelve twenty-four, thirteen twenty-four, fourteen twenty-four, and fifteen twenty-four are the specific recommendations that the mayor filed, and those are going, have already been referred to finance, just for clarification. And I get, I will entertain an order to refer, to put the mayor's communication on file. So. Moved by Councilor McDonald, seconded by Councilor Taylor. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, the communication is placed on file, and I recommend the finance committee to take a look at that as well, so thank you. All right, right now, that is the conclusion of our docket. We have, we'll, we'll go from there. Otherwise, I will entertain personal privilege. Anybody have personal privilege? So, see, Council, what? The docket is cleared. Unless anybody wants to take, docket is cleared, all right. I guess that, that wasn't in my instructions. The docket is clear.
There's your line, right here.
Okay.
Docket is clear.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, okay, that's, I get the table. I'm sorry, okay.
We're gonna get good at this. I promise you.
Gotta put that in bold, then, I guess, so. The docket is cleared. Would anybody like personal privilege? So we have Councilor Linehan first up?
Wow, I'm fast on the draw. Thank you so much. I want to welcome our new colleague, Councilor Taylor. I'm sure I won't be the only one, but it's exciting to see a new face up here. Welcome and congrats. I wanted to just briefly mention that, not this Thursday, but next week, oh, wait a minute, no, it is this Thursday. I got my days mixed up. This Thursday, Ward Three resident, Dr. Jamie Wilson, who I'm fortunate to call my friend and neighbor, is giving a talk at the library. He is an expert on the life of Martin Luther King Jr., and he has a new book out, and will be giving a talk on it that I think would be well worth anyone's time to go check out. So I'm gonna embarrass him and make a plug for that. I know we will be there, and I would encourage others to join me, and that's all that I've got.
All right, next up is Councilor Colin Hayes.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to thank, actually, the American Association for Arab Women, SUAD. They had put the first gallery opening dedicated specifically to Moroccan art and history that is over, it's, it's gonna be shown for the next, I think, like a month and a half, I put there here, maybe from the fifth to March first twenty-four at 350 Main Street. I encourage everyone to go check it out. The opening was amazing, and so I saw some of my counselors there, it was great. So thank you to that. I also wanted to, again, bring up, we keep trying to get the word out because it's something new, with the Martin Luther King Day event on January fifteenth, which will be held at the Emmanuel Baptist Church from two to four. I'm saying two to four and crossing my fingers because there's a lot going on. There's some great speakers that are coming, and Malden Reeds is going to be helping with the children's activities upstairs, so I hope you all come. I think I sent out an invitation. I'll do it again through Lisa, just to make sure. It's going to be fantastic, the keynote speaker, and we have a judge that also is coming in from Boston to speak. I think it's gonna be great. Hope to see you there.
All right, great, thank you. Councilor Spatafora?
Just wanted to wish my new colleague luck, wanted to wish you luck as a president, and I also wanted to let Margaret Crowe, happy birthday. Happy birthday, Margaret.
Happy birthday.
That's all I had, thank you.
All right. Then, let's see, we have, let's see, turn Craig off. Councilor McDonald?
Let me also welcome my ward counselor, Ari Taylor. I have a couple of sidewalk issues that I'm gonna call you about. So two quick updates. One is, I wanted to let all of you know, we have an internal development around our municipal aggregation plan, Malden Community Electracy, which was voted for, which is that we got a preliminary response from the state for approval. We still have to make our edits to the plan, we have to submit it for final approval, and then there is the process of bidding out the contract and rolling out the plan. But this is very good. This is the part of the process that other communities had waited for years to get. And with new leadership at the Department of Public Utilities, they are reorienting their entire framework for how they're managing these. I went with one of our city staff members to participate in what's called a technical session, which is a literally, and I kid you not, all-day meeting with DPU staff. I did not stay all day. But we, you know, to talk with them about their whole approach to this and how important it is for them to be partners with municipalities in this work. So that's very exciting. Stay tuned, it gives me hope that, you know, in the first half of this year, I hesitate to even say timelines, but in the first half of this year, you know, we'll really be ready to implement this program. So stay tuned. The other thing I wanted to let folks know about is that there is, our Racial Equity Commission, working with our consultants, will be having our first town hall meeting on February seventh from six to eight PM. And that will be a participatory meeting, that's a Wednesday. It'll be a meeting where we will have, you know, we'll have opportunities for breakout groups, we'll hear from some key community stakeholders and panel members. So the city will be promoting that, getting the word out, but I just wanted to share that here and now for folks who are watching at home, ask you all to help get the word out. It will be here in the council chamber so that it can be livestreamed and that there are, people can join virtually. So I'll remind you about that at the next meeting as well, but February seventh, six PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to wish my wife a happy birthday in a few days. I won't tell you how old she's gonna be, but that's because we all need a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank Bob Knox and the DPW for doing a great job cleaning the streets. You know, they were out for many hours over the weekend, and, you know, I think that they deserve the accolades for keeping our community safe and taking care of that. I like to drive in the snow. I'm the one that everyone tells you, don't go out in the snow. I love driving in the snow, it's fun. And so I was out driving around, and I can, I can testify that Melrose's roads were way worse than ours. So we can count, we can count that as a win. Next time we have a snowstorm, I'll go to Medford to make sure, you know, we really are driving it home. And I'm sure all the rain today is gonna take care of whatever's left over, so thank you to Bob Knox and the DPW for that. When it comes to the CPC projects, I would like to take a close look with the finance committee. You know, there are some concerns I have for Fitzgerald Park and Oak Grove Communities, the community building, mostly just on the trees. Y'all know me. Right now, there is a plan to remove a substantial amount of the trees, and that's just a big concern for me. I know it was also a concern for the CPC. So however, I can help with public engagement going forward and working with the finance committee. I'm no longer on finance, but I'll definitely be showing up.
Councilor McDonald, did you click again?
Well, I was just, just in response to the point about the, about the CPC items, I think we'll try to schedule those as soon as we can. So I'll talk to Lisa about that, but probably next week or the following week, we'll do that in, in finance committee, and we can look at making a joint virtual option on that if folks would like to watch the meeting. I will say, I went to the, I know a number of us went to the tree hearing recently, and that the tree determination for Fitzgerald Park is unrelated to the park project. Like, it, it's just, that's what, that's what the tree warden reported at that hearing. So, but happy to talk about those things, and we can look at a virtual join option for those finance committee discussions.
Councilor, do you have anything else, or just?
No, just looking forward to working. Thank you.
All right, great. So I don't see anybody else, so I just, a couple things. Just a reminder that next Tuesday is actually gonna be a full council meeting, as we had changed our schedule. I think we should make sure that everybody has the updated schedule that we voted on in December, just that, that clarification. We are, you're going to, next week is a full council meeting. If you have any papers you need to file because of Martin Luther King Day, papers need to be filed by 10 AM tomorrow. So, so that is how that is. Just, I appreciate everybody's support for me on council, looking forward to a great year and a great start here.